In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on January 4th, 2012 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Mr. Mahmood, can I have a roll call, please?
Surely. Ms. Bogachewski?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas? Mrs. Haley? Mr. Kint?
Here.
Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Pageant?
Here. The purpose of this meeting is to go into executive session, so I will read the motion, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education and the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows: The following matters to be discussed are student disciplinary matter related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying. The matters discussed in the executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'll take a motion to that effect.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No abstentions. We are in executive session. Thank you. We are back in session. All right, we need a roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Bogachewski?
Here.
Okay. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Pageant?
Here. All right, so that we were holding an earlier session to go into executive session, and we're going to close that session. So I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No abstentions. So we are closing that session, and we are opening the set regular 7:30 scheduled session. So, in accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on January 4th, 2012 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not that we've gone anywhere, but can we have a roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Ms. Bogachewski?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kint?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Pageant?
Here. We see we have correspondents listed, and we're going to move right on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy New Year, welcome back, everyone. It's wonderful seeing such a great crowd here tonight. I think many of you are from the beautiful Woodfern Elementary School, because tonight we're going to be spotlighting our 4th grade students and the work that they've been doing to present a Roadrunner News program. So with that, I'd like to introduce the principal of Woodfern Elementary School, Mr. J. Micah.
Thank you, and good eve-- thank you, and good evening. One of the great things about technology is it gives you an opportunity to explore many different ways in doing for tonight a research project, and I'm not going to take up any of your time, because the people that did the work are back here. Mr. Lozano, Courtney, Gavin, Alan, and Asha are going to come up and explain exactly what they did, and then show you. And I want to thank the Woodfern family for turning out tonight. I greatly appreciate it, and your support is welcome. Thank you. Mr. Lozano?
All right, I will try to keep this brief. Good evening to everybody. My students, to begin this project, each selected a topic from the southeast region that we had studied in social studies. And then we went to the computer lab, they used the computers to assist in their research, and also their writing of this, and each of them were responsible for writing a piece of a news script. They took the news script, and through that research process, had to find two verified sources, had to cite their writing, and also come up with a clear paragraph that really explained what their topic was that they were going to present. The students will explain in just a moment in further detail the steps that they took for this project, but just to give you a little bit more background on what we did, this is the first time we're doing this project, I came up with the idea of a fun way to do a end-of-the-unit projects, we're working on all five regions of the US, and for each region, we'll be adding a new chunk to the news segment. We worked on the project for only a total of four hours over the course of one week, it was during their social studies instruction time each day. And they, after they had their script, had one evening to go home, review it, practice it, and then present, and we filmed it. So what you're going to see is what they had memorized, what they had learned, and they're doing it in front of the camera without prompting, without cue cards, so it really is just coming from their knowledge base. The students and I felt that, you know, it was definitely a very successful first take at this initiative, and now we're looking at how can we fine-tune it. We just started the research today for their northeast news clip, so they're working on getting their research and writing their scripts, and I'm working on fine-tuning my editing skills. As you'll see, it's a little choppy, this is not, you know, my forte, so that's my job for the next clip to go around. I'll turn it over to my students, who are going to explain more. So we have Courtney, we have Gavin, Asha, and Alan, who will each come up to explain to you a little bit more about the project. All right? So.
Hi, my name is Courtney Ringreen, and I am a student in Mrs. Lozano's 4th grade class at Woodfern School. I am here to tell you about our exciting Roadrunner News video project. We recently completed our social studies unit on the southeast region of the United States, and we worked together to create news clips to share what we learned. First, each student selected a topic about the southeast. Some examples include the growing season, the cotton gin, plantations, and textile mills. Then we used many sources such as our social studies books and library books, as well as several internet sites, in order to research the important facts. After finding information and citing sources, we wrote paragraphs about our topics. We also searched the World Book Online website to gather photos which we used as backdrops for our news reporting. Finally, Mrs. Lozano videotaped us as we took to sharing our news reports. I really enjoyed working with my classmates on our first video project. We all learned to use teamwork to create an exciting news report from 23 separate topics. This experience helped make learning social studies fun. I can't wait until we make our next news report on the northeast.
Hello, my name is Gavin Howser-Cassick, a student in Mr. Lozano's 4th grade class. To succeed in this project, our class had to pass through a number of stages. First, we choose, we chose a subject from the southeast region, such as a crop farmer or planting process of some sort. Then we had to do research for about a week. We next wrote some short paragraphs for the report on our separate subjects. Finally, Mr. Lozano took us in the computer room to look up photos to stand in front of. We gave our report to Mr. Lozano, and he typed it out for us. Later, we practiced and rehearsed with a partner. Lastly, it was time to film. Mr. Lozano sat in a chair, holding the camera while we recited a report. I've learned from this project more about the southeast, mostly more about my topic, which was tobacco. I had a lot of fun filming, not that I didn't make any mistakes. And finding the pictures on the computer.
Hi, my name is Asha Patel, and I'm here to talk about a news report on the southeast that my class and I did. First, we had to do research on our southeast topics. My topic was sharecropping. For this, we had to go home and find an article about our topic, print it out, and bring it to school the next day. We also used books at school to help us with our research. Next, we had to write out our scripts. We had to write them out based on facts that we learned through our research. The script had to be like we were telling a story, not just a bunch of facts. Then we had to cite our sources. We were each handed a bibliography outline sheet. Mr. Lozano and Mrs. Comich taught us how to use it to cite our sources. Lastly, we gathered pictures. We went online and found pictures on our topics so they could be used as our backgrounds. Finally, it was time to make the video. It took a long time, but it was worth it. I think the video was challenging but fun. I liked it a lot. I learned more about the topics we read about in social studies. I also learned how to broadcast a news reporter, and I learned all the steps that an actual news reporter does to get their stories on TV. Finished.
Hello, my name is Alan G. During our southeast video project, we each picked a topic that was important to the growth of the southeast region. We did a lot of research online and in books. Then, we each took our own research and wrote our scripts to memorize. Before recording, we had to gather a few pictures on our topic to play as background. After we did record our final video, Mr. Lozano connected all the different parts for us on the computer, and we had one giant video project. Mrs. Comich, our librarian, also came in to help us cite our sources and not plagiarize. I think that this was a great way to help us get to know the southeast more in depth. It was a really fun thing, and I can't wait to start on the northeast.
Today's broadcast will focus on numerous topics in the southeast of the United States, taking us all the way back to 1607 with John Rolfe and the Jamestown Settlement, to present day southeast industries. Joining us live in the studio now is Clayton with more information on this early colony.
And I'll be telling you what a colony is. A colony is a settlement or settlements that are far away from home. People that came from England, trying to find treasure, and finding no treasure, they struggle, and growing all the crops they need, they survive. And now, I'm Nick. I'm going to tell you a little bit more about John Rolfe. John Rolfe came to look for treasure. When he didn't find any, he had to find a newly described. He knew the soil was good for planting tobacco, after he seen many of Americans do it. That became the first crop they sold and export to England. Now on to Gavin, with some more information.
Hi, this is Gavin, reporting to you on tobacco. Tobacco is a plant that can be ra-- that can be raised, harvested, and then dried, and used for smoking. John Rolfe helped his colony survive by planting this crop. Today, today we know the harmful effects of tobacco. Back then, they did not. And now, I turn it over to Kaia with more information on cash.
Thanks, Gavin. Hi, I'm Kaia R, and I'm going to tell you about cash crops. Cash crops are a crop that is sold for money, and is not for farmers' own use. The three main ca-- cash crops are rice, tobacco, and cotton. Now, we will turn it over to Emma and talk about slavery.
Thanks, Kaia. I'm Emma, and I'm here to tell you about slavery. Slavery are people who work for someone else without freedom. A slave, a slave are taken from Africa to work on the south, on the plantation of the Slaves are forced to work many hours and long days.
Thank you, Emma.
Hi, I'm Alice, reporting on plantations. Plantation is a big farm where one main crop is grown. Farmers grew this cash crop to get the money they needed to buy the goods they needed. Plantations grew in time successfully, and more people wanted to buy the crops that grew on them. Now, usually, the slave, and they needed more slaves to work on the plantations. Now, I'll send it over to Mark.
Thank you, Alice. Hi, I'm Mark, and I'm reporting on Carolina rice. It was a very busy place down here at the rice plantations. There's a lot of commotion, but I was able to get a pack of Carolina rice. It's available at a supermarket near you. And now, here's some more, more information on this important crop. Their, rice needed to be flooded in water to survive and grow. Southeast had produced the most rice. South Carolina. Now, I'll turn it over to Sierra.
Thanks, Mark. I'm Sierra, and I'll be telling you more about cotton. You might be wondering, what is cotton? Cotton is a plant that produces white fluffy material that is made to make clothes. You would probably wear something made of cotton right now. Cotton was successful in the southeast because, because of the slaves, the climate, and eventually the textile industry. The cotton grew, but it also has, it also had problems too.
Thank you, Sierra. Hi, I'm Angela, reporting on inventions. An invention is a tool used to help people more, easier, and quicker. Eli Whitney made the cotton gin that helped remove the seeds from a cotton plant, because it was harder to remove it by hand. Nowadays, the, in, a machine picks co-- cotton seeds and picks the cotton back in the dirt.
Thank you, thank you, Angela. Hi, I'm Kaia, and I will tell you a bit about Eli Whitney. Eli Whitney, as a young boy, had to help his father on his farm. Years later, he become, he became a very famous inventor.
Thank you, Kaia. Hi, I'm Emily, reporting for Roadrunner News on the invention of the cotton gin. The cotton gin is a machine used for separating the seeds from the cotton fibers. It also meant that farmers could grow more cotton, because it could be cleaned quicker. Slavery increased, because there was more cotton grown, so there was more cotton picked.
Thanks, Emily. Hi, I'm Court, reporting to you about the growing seasons. The growing season is the time between the last frost in the spring and the first frost in the fall. It had hot summers and warm winters. The soil was very rich, because it had lots of precipitation. Now, I'll hand it over to Brianna.
Thanks, Court. Hi, I'm Brianna, I'm going to tell you some information about precipitation. Precipitation is any form of water that falls to earth. Precipitation can be in many different forms, such as snow, sleet, hail, or rain. Since the southeast gets a lot of precipitation, it helps them by flooding rice fields and watering crops. Now, I'll send over with Anon with some more information.
Thank you, Brianna. Hello, I am Anon, and I'm going to teach you about George Washington Carver. Carver was famous for his, and Carver was the one who invented crop rotation.
Thank you, Anon. Hi, my name is Ash, and I'm reporting to you on sharecropping in the southeast. A sharecropper is a free slave who lives on land, invented to them by another person, and who gives part of their harvest to the landowner as rent. Sharecropping was difficult work, and the soil wore out, because they only planted one crop year after year. If the crop did poorly, then they had an even harder time, because they did not have enough of their crop to sell to buy the things they needed. That's all for sharecropping. Now, I pass it to Alan to-- Thanks, Asha. This is Alan, reporting on crop rotation. Crop rotation is a method of enriching the soil by planting a different crop each year. By planting different crops with different needs, the crops take different nutrients out of the soil, giving other nutrients time to regenerate. This method was originally pioneered by George Washington Carver, trying to help sharecroppers. Peanuts and peas greatly help the nitrogen levels in the soil, but when it comes to choosing which plants to use, it depends on the soil, climate, and what the crop market is selling. That's all for now. Thank you, Alan. This is Ray, reporting on mixed farming. Mixed farming is, is when farmers grow two or more crops at the same time. Mixed farming started with the sharecroppers. They were running at their soil, so they could not have the best growing seasons for mixed farming. Now, I'll turn you over to Nick.
Thanks, Ray. Hello, this is Nick, reporting to you about fuel. Fuel is anything that can be burned to produce heat or energy. One of the most common southeast fuels was coal. Men and boys as young as 11 years old were forced to work in the coal mines. This was a very dangerous job, and eventually led to the forming of the labor union.
Thanks, Nick. Hi, this is Eric. I'm going to be telling you about labor unions. Labor unions are a group of workers who join together to protect their interests, so they work together to try to make changes happen. There were and still are many labor unions in the United States. They tried and made healthcare, and gave their children a chance to go to school. Here's Jonathan.
Thanks, Eric. Hi, this is Jonathan, with a report on child labor. Child labor in the southeast occurred during the late 1800s and early 1900s. Children in the coal mines had, had often gotten injured, sick, or even died.
Thanks, Jonathan. Hi, my name is Lucas, and I'll talk a bit more about coal miners in the southeast. One of the horrible things that coal miners had to watch out for was was black lung disease. And black lung disease is where coal dust falls off the coal, and, and you breathe it in. Eventually, you get stuck in your lungs, and you can't breathe. That's, that's how you die. Other, another thing is mines can, blood claps and give you serious inju-- injuries. The coal dust can pollute area around it. I want Casey with--
Thanks, Lucas. Hello, I'm Casey, reporting to you today on the textile mills. A textile mill is a mach-- a machine that turns cotton into cloth. A mill brought more money and, more money and jobs to the region.
Thanks, Casey. Hi, I'm Sarah. As Casey mentioned, with the textile mills, industry was a major part of the southeast. An industry is all the businesses that make one kind of product, like cotton or coke. The industries helped the Piedmont region, because the demand for these products increased, which brought more money to this area.
This has been Roadrunner News. Tune in next time for more history of the United States, when we focus our attention on the northeast region. Thank you.
Let's give a big round of applause to all of the students who are here tonight, who saw that. If you were in this video, can you please stand up so we can see you and recognize you? If you were in the video, sta-- there you go, come on, stand up, and maybe we can see them, get you on TV. Wonderful job. Thank you to all of the kids, especially Courtney, Gavin, Asha, and Alan, who presented tonight. Weren't they wonderfully well-spoken? They do a nice job, let's give them a big hand. As well as Mr. Lozano and Mr. Micah for coming out tonight, and all the teachers and other people who came and supported. Really great job. With that, Mr. President, could we take maybe a two-minute recess to--
Yes.
I think some of our kids may want to go home and do their homework, maybe? Thank you. Have a two-minute recess?
Yes, sir.
We're back in business here. We have a few more things to talk about. On the superintendent's report, there's an item, a follow-up to the Violence and Vandalism Report, the board did receive, as well as the public, a detailed report, I believe at our last or the meeting prior to the last. But we needed to notice this within the agenda, so we are doing that, and we wish to pause for a moment and see if there's any questions from the public about our Violence and Vandalism Report that was reported out. It is available on the website for anyone that is interested in reviewing that, that I don't see any at this point, so I'm going to move on.
You can also contact us by email, too.
At any time. We have some wonderful news to share. I'd like to send out congratulations to Thomas Kozlowski, a senior at Hillsborough High School, and Mr. Robert Fenster, one of Thomas's teachers, for receiving the, I'm sorry, the Guild Scholarship Award from the, from the Jewish Guild for the Blind. The Guild Scholar Program was created in part through a generous grant from the Jeanette Carey Meyer Trust. Thomas is among 12 legally blind college-bound high school seniors to receive a $10,000 scholarship. The 12 winners from all over the country were chosen for their academic excellence, community involvement, financial need, and, and of course, they had to be a US citizen as well. Mr. Fenster was chosen from among the applicant's essays for his role in encouraging and bringing out the best in his students. Each applicant was asked to write about a teacher whose encouragement made a difference in their lives. Congratulations to Thomas and Mr. Fenster. Let's give them a round of applause. I also, this weekend, had a, had the pleasure and the privilege to attend the RoboRaiders kickoff, annual kickoff, which, which is the event that all of the first teams from around the entire world hear about their robotic challenge for, for this season. Along with me was Tui Anlay and, and Mr. Kintz. We had a very nice time, it was well-attended, they were close to 100 students that are going to be part of this wonderful activity, so we look forward to our RoboRaiders Team 75 doing another great job this year. And, and that's all I have at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the public regarding the superintendent's report? Is there any comment from the board regarding the superintendent's report? All right, seeing none, we can move on. We're moving on to approval of minutes. I will take a motion to approve the December 12, 2011 Special Public Session.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? All right, moving on to the December 12, 2011 Regular Public Session. I need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion for that one? All right, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And any abstentions?
Abstain, and Mr. Pageant, if I could, change my vote on the first one, I didn't notice the date. I can't? Then it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter, it's only the--
Doesn't matter. Okay.
I also abstain.
All right.
I also abstain.
All right.
On December 19.
It's the 12th.
The 12th?
We're doing 12. We're still doing 12, don't abstain.
Are you good for the 12th? Okay. Moving on to the December 12, 2011 Executive Session, I need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? And abstentions?
Abstain. Abstain.
So we have Mr. Gillette, Mr. Kintz, Mr. Rosenberg. All right, moving on to the December 12, I'm sorry, December 19, 2011 Special Public Session, I need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions?
Abstain.
This is Bogachewski. All right, moving along to the December 19, 2011 Regular Public Session, I need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? All right, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions?
Abstain.
This is Bogachewski. Moving on to the December 19, 2011 Executive Session, I need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussions? All right, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And abstentions?
Abstain.
That's all. All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you very much. Move on. We have no committee reports, but we're going to move on. If there's any new business, we'll go to the public at this time. Those wishing to address the board regarding new business may do so at this time. We may not address it, but we may, or we may refer to a committee or administration or put it on a future work session. So any new business from the public at this time? All right, seeing none. Any new business from the board? Mrs. Haley.
Thank you, Dr. Paget. Actually, I have two items. One is, do we have an update about what caused the sewage issue at the high school?
We know that there was a blockage in a pipe for an acid-neutralization tank which collects the waste from all of our chemistry and other labs. That has been remediated. What happened, as you recall, we had some plumbing problems in the 500 section, 500 wing of the high school, which led to an emergency closing. The rotor ruder was on-site during that time, however, was concerned that it was very... Well, it wasn't conducive to a learning environment. That's putting it mildly. And even though it was remediated late that afternoon into early that evening, it was the right call to get the kids out. There has been some residual smell that has remained. We are ventilating that particular area. rotor ruder cleaned out that particular block and also some of the other lines that are along that particular hallway. That has been resolved, but I have asked for an air quality evaluation to be completed, just to be safe. At this stage, we didn't need to continue any type of school closure, but there was a faint smell in the hallway. We did put a fan in there, and at times we'll kind of open up the doors. But it seems to be located by where that well is. The well was drained, and I believe tonight we're getting a shipment of limestone, or was the treatment completed this afternoon, tonight? Okay. So we'll have people there tomorrow morning also to ventilate and make sure that it's a comfortable environment for our students.
Okay. Thank you very much. Also, as some of you know, I coach recreation basketball here, actually at Auton Road, on Saturdays, and I have to just relay a complaint that we had a major temperature control issue in the new gym. We were fortunate enough in January to have a 55, 60-degree day on Saturday, but as I understand, the temperature is controlled at an off-site location, and anybody that attended recreation basketball on Saturday knows that it was probably about 80 degrees in the new gym, which was very uncomfortable while it was very cold in the old gym. So I'm just curious to see what we can do as far as regulation to try to keep things consistent, because it was uncomfortable for us as coaches who weren't running around the children, the referees who stay all day. So I'm just curious to see what we can try to do to work with this temperature control off-site company, whatever it is we outsource it to, just because it was very uncomfortable for everybody.
Thanks for letting us know. We'll contact Energy for America.
Thank you.
And to follow up, I'll just let you know, as a chemist, I know that chemistry can stink. So instead of a sewage problem, we are having a chemistry problem. Any other... Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, just a quick one. This is under our informational items. We always get a report about the student... What do you call it?
Suspension?
No, no, no. Our enrollment, our complete enrollment. The last line, or it used to be for all the years that I've been here, the last line was the same number enrolled at that month the previous year. And we're not getting that. Last couple of months, we're not getting that line anymore. So in other words, under the very last thing, the total, 73, 84 for district total, then we have under that, district total, January 2010, and whatever that number was. Just kind of a little... It was nice to have that, to see whether we're up or down over the same time last year, but we're no longer getting that.
There wasn't an intent to remove it.
I know, I understand. It's just one of those things. Computers, right?
Okay.
Can't live with them, can't live without them.
Anything else? All right, seeing none? Oh.
Just a quick request to present this meeting's minutes at the next meeting, so we can get a cadence of just voting on the previous week's. Thank you.
That's for you.
We can do that.
Okay. All right, moving along. No more new business. Onto the action agenda. We'll take a comment from the public regarding the action agenda at this time, and the board can comment during the action agenda. All right, seeing none. Dr. Schiff, would you like to...
Under the action items, I'm asking the board to consider the following motions under the Education Section of the Agenda this evening, including the approval of professional travel and related expenses, the approval of the harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigation list, a motion to approve the overnight field trips, approve the following policies for second reading, the dating violence at schools, as well as tuition assistance, approve the out-of-district placements, and actually, two different out-of-district placements, and a change in out-of-district placement under the area of education. So A1 through A7.
Mrs. Haas, would you like to do the honors?
Yes, so moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion for those items? All right, seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Sure. Mr. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Under the area of Human Resources, I ask that the board consider my recommendations to approve the attached sidebar agreement, approve the new positions of three-part-time instructional assistants, special education teacher, and six bus aides as per the needs of our special needs students, approve the resignations and retirements as listed, approve the leaves of absence as listed, rescinding two contracts and approving additional contract changes, long-term subs, and the improvement of appointments as listed, including long-term substitutes, mentors, cohort pre-service experience for teachers, student teachers, and substitutes.
All right. Mr. Pulsifer, would you like to do the honors?
On behalf of the Human Resources Committee, so moved.
Thank you. I need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a...
Mr. Kinst?
I have a question for clarification. There's an item or a number of items in here called cohort experience? That looks new. I don't recall seeing that. Can you just explain that?
Mr. Racco.
We typically work with the College of New Jersey, and we'll bring in a series of students just prior to their student teaching experience, a junior professional experience. They come in as a cohort. What they'll do is they'll get matched up with a teacher, they'll observe, they'll be part of the classroom. They're cohorts, so they go back to the same cooperating teachers at TCNJ, work together, talk about methodology, instruction, those type of things. We've been doing it now five, six, seven years.
Okay. Great, thank you.
It was previously listed under student teaching, but it's really not student teaching. It's a different type of pre-service experience. That's why we made a language change there.
Yes. I hadn't heard the word cohort, and I've heard it repeatedly this year. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Sure. Mr. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Paget?
Yes.
I'm recommending to the board under the area of operations to approve the line on transfers, the second reading of the recording of board minutes and emergency contracts policies, approve the resolution to amend the NJ SBAIG bylaws, and to approve the resolution for participation in coordinated transportation with the Monmouth Ocean Educational Services Commission, and motion to approve the resolution regarding the projectors and the screen installations at the Hillsborough High School, Middle School, and Auton Road to be part of our long-range facility plan.
All right. Mr. Gillette, would you like to do the honors?
Yes, so moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Haley. All right, any discussion on these items? Mr. Kinst?
For the policy that's up for second reading for recording board meetings in here is a new requirement that if somebody from the public wants to record, video-record the actual proceedings, that they have to send notification and gain approval? If I'm reading this correctly?
Yes.
Okay. This is a public forum. I don't think we should have that requirement if a citizen wants to come in to videotape. As long as it's not disruptive, I don't think there should be any limitation for doing that.
Is that a state law? Is that...
That was a recommendation from... It's not state law. It's a recommendation from Strathasby.
The, I don't know, the policy authoring company that we contact included that. I'm not sure why. Mr. Mahmood, would you like to...
I think, Mr. Kinst, and I agree with you regarding it's a public meeting, and certainly it should be something the public has a right to do. I think the reason behind that is more of, some people do, if it's a big production and they bring in like a large amount of equipment, and if it would be disruptive to our board meeting, that's where it's prior approval. Anybody who asks us as a board to tape the meeting, we're not going to get in their way and say, "No, you can't." However, if a big studio comes in and starts to set up, obviously, the board, it would be disruptive, maybe, and we'd have to make sure that if there's lights or whatever that they're setting up is not disruptive to the board. But we would not hinder anybody from videotaping one of our meetings. They are videotaped as we speak, so...
Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, I just... I agree with Tom. I also read that... I'm not sure what it means. Notification means they just have to notify us. We're not really going to turn anyone down. But I'm not even sure of the notification. I mean, by the letter of the law, the letter of the policy, we had people here tonight videotaping their children because they were here. Now, by the letter, by the, you know, nuts and bolts of the policy, would we have said, "Wait a second, we didn't get notification from you, Mr. and Mrs. Woodfern, school parent. You have to shut off your camera"?
Wait into the crowd and grab their camera.
Yeah? Escort them out.
It was right in my backswing.
So that, I'm not sure, do we... In other words, I'm fine with... I would normally be fine with just letting this go, but then every time someone comes in and does a little videotaping like that, are we then ignoring our own policy? I don't know. If that's...
I mean, the following paragraph talks about the obtrusiveness of it. So it's got to be silent, it can't be in the way. And then even further down, it makes reference to, somebody can audio-record with no limitations whatsoever. So I'd like to be consistent and just take out that requirement. Notification is nice, and it should be, you know, common courtesy to do that, but the way that it's written is that, "Will permit the use, only one notice of such intended use has been given to the board secretary." So I don't think that is appropriate. It should be taken out.
Dr. Rosenberg?
I'm inclined to agree. Even if they brought in lights, even if the press came and they brought in television lights, I don't see how we could tell them they couldn't do it. I think there's a difference between allowing people to record things and being disruptive to a meeting. Disruptive to a meeting is a different issue, and one could be disruptive to a meeting in a way that has nothing to do with recording. And we would... We... There's probably a policy or something that protects us there, so if someone was disruptive with video equipment, we could deal with the disruption. But if we were so blessed to have something really cool here that the press wanted to cover and they brought TV lights, we wouldn't be able to... We shouldn't, we wouldn't, and we shouldn't be able to say no. It's a public meeting.
Like board fistfights?
Like board fistfights, right.
We are getting into budget.
That's right. So I think that could be arbitrary and could be used inappropriately, and I would like to see it taken out.
I would like to put forward, I see where you're going. Perhaps we can table that policy for tonight and ask operations to... Is there, you know what, it sounds like it's too much, but they have it in there for a reason. Maybe we find out what that reason was. Can we do that?
Yeah, I don't know how we missed this in operations, but after looking at it and hearing Mr. Kinst's comments tonight, I think we should find out for sure if there's some other state statute or something that, you know, is making us, requiring us to have the notification aspect. I still think the disruptiveness could stay in. If you're...
Yeah.
If we see that it's a whole production going on here, we could have the right to... But I don't think, just for the typical parents coming in with their video cameras or a student wanting to videotape because it's their civics class or whatever they call it nowadays, we don't have to have notification for that.
You know, I'm thinking, as we're talking, I'm thinking if, consider that if there was, if you had multiple news outlets wanted to congratulate us on such a grand something, and this room wouldn't be adequate to set up in, but you would like to allow them to, so maybe we'd move it to somewhere else. I don't know. You know, I'm just trying to think. I would assume that you would know beforehand about that. I don't know.
I think one distinction, and it may be splitting hairs for the type of activities, and the number of times people have tried to record us. But while we are a public body, I don't believe by doing so, we have given up the right to know that we are being recorded. And by whom? Now, we can't say no, but we have a right, I believe we have a right to know as individual board members, that we are being recorded beyond this. We know that recording is happening, but I believe we still have a right, public body or not, to know that we are being recorded. And I think this is, the notification is purely an issue of all facts on the table, not a, "You can't record," but I think there is a right to know on both sides.
We could ask that question.
Do we get recorded every time we're here?
Hang on. So if we...
But you know that. I don't know that there's so...
But I don't know if...
Hang on, one at a time.
In the back, they are.
Mrs. Haley?
Sorry.
Or...
That's exactly my point. I think we do have a right to know that somebody in the back is recording. We can't stop them from recording, but I believe we have a right to know that they are, and I think that is maybe the justification for the notification.
I'm just going to disagree, Chris, really quickly on this one, because when we're in public, it's like we're on a parade down, you know, down Beekman Lane here on Memorial Day, and if I'm in the Memorial Day Parade, I'm, you know, I'm in public, just like I am here, and, you know, people can videotape that. I don't need, I don't have any right to know who's doing it. I'm not sure about that aspect, but I think this does need to go back, though, for some serious issues.
I do believe that the advance notice, the purpose of it, was for administration to review the guidelines with anyone that requests. With the opportunity to put this on the web, and it's free and it's available, that need may not exist any longer with technology.
All right. So you were the original motion. Can we table this?
Yeah, table that aspect. Yeah, table that aspect.
And, and see if there's any other compelling reason why to have that language in there.
Let's take it out.
All right. Any other discussion items? Mr. Kins.
I have, have a question with regard, and this is in regard to the second reading for the school nutrition. What's the official end of a school day? And the question in particular is if we're hosting a home athletic event, so like, let's say a football game, what, what is the end of the school day for that situation?
Dr. Antunes?
Typically, the end of the school day is what's on the books as the end of the school instructional day. After-hours activities don't, are not included in that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
And, and I'll, just in case people are confused, is that there, there's limitations on what could be sold. So I'm thinking football games, hot chocolate, according to this, hot chocolate at a football game would not meet. It's one of these, since sugar's the number one ingredient, it couldn't be there. So I just wanted to make sure that we weren't setting ourselves up. Thanks.
Mrs. Haley.
Just clarification on C five, the installation or approval of a resolution. Is this part of the improvement project that we had set aside in the budget last year that we're installing projectors, we're just?
Yeah, Mr. Mahmoud, maybe you can explain the need to put it on the long-range facility plan?
Yes, Ms. Haley, the answer to your questions, yes. And we are required, just the reason why we're putting it on as a resolution is, we are required because we have to get city permits from the town. So because of that need, we then have to put it on as a resolution. We submit it to the state. The state then looks at our long-range facilities plan, approves, denies it, sends it to the town, and then the town can move to inspect it once it's installed.
Thank you.
A simple process like that.
Yeah.
Excellent. All right. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, roll call. Mr. Mahmoud, I had to clarify, it's everything C one through C five with the bylaw 168, recording of board meetings is tabled.
Excuse me, Steve. I have, I have a couple more clarification questions with the nutrition. So the, the, there is an addition for, schools may not serve whole milk. Reduced fat has been added, so no 2% milk. I wanted, does that also cover if it's an ingredient for a served meal? And is that potentially going to be an issue? So if they're making Alfredo sauce and they need milk, they would have 1% or skim milk on hand to create that?
I believe this is specifically for drinking, not for cooking.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So C one through C five with the recording board meetings table for another meeting. All right, roll call, Mr. Mahmoud.
Mr. Bobyshevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette? Yes. Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Paget?
Yes.
And that's all for the action agenda item, Mr. President. The informational items of the suspension, report on fire and crises drills, as well as enrollment is available for, for board review.
Thank you very much. We're ready to move on to old business before I, actually, I'll open it up to the public first, seeing motion out of the corner of my eye. Old business may be addressed to the board at this time. It may be addressed, it may be put to a committee or put on a later action item. Mr. Jordan?
Two of one broke our court. Tim Jordan. I just want to see if we got any resolution on my question last board meeting about the substitute computer issue.
We, we did refer the question to, to Mr. Handler about that. And you're, specifically, if I, if I recall the question, it was about access to, to certain technologies and, and was it specific to the password and sign-in? Or was it not specific to the password?
Students not being able to use it, correct?
Right. There's a limitation at the high school, well, I guess in the whole district, but the, the high school specifically about if, if a substitute is in a classroom, they're not, the students are not allowed to get online in, in any computer, either a tablet or a, a PC that's in the classroom.
The question I referred to our Director of Technology was about access for the substitute teacher to receive a temporary password in order to get into the system. And that doesn't seem like the question that, that you're asking.
No, no, I, I, no, we, I specifically don't even want that.
Right, right, I remember that.
We don't want, we don't want to go down that road. I, I just want the students to be able to have access to the technology that is now being brought in, you know, by the district, you know, tablets, et cetera, while there's a substitute. That's all.
I'll touch base with the high school administration about that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other old business from the public? All right, seeing none. I'm going to start off the old business myself, because I can call on myself, and mention that as, as board members should probably be aware, we had been piloting a committee structure that was different from the old one. It was, we have three committees now, which are operations, education, and human resources. Last week, I think Thursday morning, we, Mr. Gillette, Mr. Pulsifer, Mrs. Haas and I, and Dr. Schiff met to discuss some of the feedback that board members had given. And in, in a, in the next meeting, we will have a discussion and we will have a vote. And if we vote to keep the structure, then the next step would be to direct the operations committee to draft policy that is consistent with that committee structure. Because we don't, we, we've just temporarily done this to test it out. So we don't have a policy regarding this. During that discussion, there was some of the feedback that was given to us was that we, we would perhaps, if we keep the committee structure, there might be some modifications that would improve it in that instead of just three committee chairs responsible for three areas, we would have within a committee, people responsible for a particular area. So if it's operations, the operations chair, but then you would have somebody that would be focusing on facilities, that way, and so, and then maybe another person focusing on policy, that way you don't have one person who has to juggle all the, the balls at once. That was one idea that was put forward. There is also discussion about the fact that we, we, within these committees, we are indicating whether we favor an action or not to the board and that presently, the president, actually in the, in the, in the old structure, the president was a, what's it? Ex-officio member of all committees. But the idea that if, if, and then in this structure, the vice president attends two of the committees, the president attends all three of the committees, that perhaps there would be a designation of which committee that person would essentially be weighing in on, on policy or when, when we're getting opinions from committees and bringing them back. So instead of, that way, if there's, there wouldn't be an undue influence by having the, the president on all three committees and essentially having more of a say than anybody else. So that could be modified, too. We also talked about the fact that we, we should shorten the meetings a bit and be more focused on, more of a laser focus on things that we need to get done. A little, some things can be done via email instead of brought up and discussed. And I am open to other thoughts from people at this time. I, I, I think that there, there's possibilities of improving this structure if, if people would offer them. Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start off just to comment, make a few comments about the meeting that we had, Mr. Pulsifer, Mrs. Haas, Dr. Paget, Dr. Schiff. And, and as Dr. Paget indicated, we, we brought the different concerns that we had heard from board members, our own concerns, all into the, all into the mix. Dr. Schiff did, did say that the three committee structure really helps him and helps his team a lot. That was, I think that's a, a major factor here because the entire process that he's, he's working with now, he, he told us how he's overhauled the entire office, the way they work, and it, and it, and it really, a lot of it centers around, believe it or not, here we go, it centers on our board and the way we work. I don't think that's ever been done before. I think, so I think that's good. So the three committee structure is helping him. So within that structure, what can we do? And my own experience has been that, you know, I've always been chair of finance for all the years I've been on the board, but now with this additional responsibility, I'll get the agenda and I'll say finance, and we have facilities, and then we have a bunch of policies down here and maybe some bylaws and governance-type issues. And I'm looking at, I'm like, oh my, this is a, this is a lot of stuff for me to get there, you know, to be sort of answerable to. Not, not to understand or to, to work on, I can do that, but then at the meeting, I have to remember everything we worked on and be answerable, from my perspective, to all of that. And that's a lot. So the idea, as, as Dr. Paget mentioned, the idea would be, for instance, for operations, we'd have the finance person, facilities, and our third subject is governance, which is bylaws and policies and governance. And very simple for human resources, there's the personnel aspect, there's the negotiation aspect, and then there's human resources policies, each of the three persons. And, and in education, we talked about program of instruction. Maybe the second one would be possibly technology. And the third, once again, policy. We, that, education's a little different because all communications is also a big aspect of what Dr. Antunes does and she's, and she works with that education committee and that, that has to be a big aspect in there, too, the community partnership network and everything that they do. So that might take some tweaking. But that was one issue and we think that doing it like that will, will allow the administration to work most effectively within this structure, but still give all board members a chance to have their, have some response, more responsibility and more input in their respective areas. The second issue, the second main issue from my perspective was that never before have we really voted this much in committee. We usually just hashed it out, three people, you know, banging each other on the heads until we try to get a consensus, you know, compromised and, and do it like that. But now what we're doing is, we're, the committees are saying, okay, we're actually saying if, if the vote is two to one or three zero or four zero, or whatever it is, saying, look, we're going to bring this item to the board and we're going to vote here two to one. So now that we have essentially the vice president and the president as sort of voting members on the committee, then you have two members that have five votes and the rest of us only have eight, seven votes. So it's like five among two and seven among seven. That sort of went against just the precepts of our, how our board operates, one, you know, one vote per person. Before, we never really were had, we never were, really were taking votes in that same way. We always were sort of like, you know, straw polling or whatever, seeing where people stood. But we weren't taking the concrete votes that were reported out in our committee minutes like we are now. So that was an issue. And also, it's not just vice president and president, it's also, some of us on the board are, and I'm going to say Mrs. Lay probably and Mrs. Haas, are consistent substitutes, substitute a lot. Because when a board member's traveling or not in town, I know the two of them are called on a lot to substitute. So then if they're substituting, then they're getting multiple votes to that month. And nor, and a lot of times, that doesn't really matter because they're all looking at different issues, but we did have some issues that went to all three committees, namely, whether we should add a fourth vice principal to the high school. That went to all three committees. And so with, with board members weighing in multiple times on each of the, each of the committees, that could give a skewed perspective to administration of where we really stood on that issue. So that's something that, what, what we would like to do then is go back to administration and operations committee and try to find the, the solution that solves that little problem in there. And I think, I think we can solve that problem. Some things that were suggested would be that the vice president would sit on one committee but not, only vote on one and not vote on the other. And same thing with, with the president maybe would vote on the committee that the vice president wasn't voting on, but not on the other two. There, there's a way to do it like that. And substitutes, we would just somehow work out that also. So as, as Dr. Paget said, we could have some discussion tonight. We're actually a little bit early tonight, you know, it's not nine yet, so if you want to talk for a few minutes. But what we do is maybe have this on the agenda for next, for two weeks from now. Say, do you want to make these changes? Okay, just, and that just to tell administration, okay, look, we're going to go back, now let's make a new policy incorporating the changes. So that's what.
And a lot of the details can, can be banged out in the committee structure, too, in, in terms of, you know, just like any policy, if you bring it forward and, and people don't agree, we can discuss it. Dr. Rosenberg?
Yeah. Both of those suggestions make sense. I think, I, I think it is a lot for the committee chairs to have responsibility across the board. And I think it's a, it's a reasonable compromise for each committee person to have certain areas that they focus on. And, and you could, the committee could decide to rotate, it could do a whole bunch of things. And, and as far as the voting is concerned, it, it is a little awkward. And I think you, I think there's some solution here that we could find so that everybody has one vote, including the substitutes. I, I would like to point out that I have, in, in the six years I've been on the board, I have never seen such great support from the administration for the committees. Kate Shaughnessy, in, in the, in the meetings, the quality of the minutes, the, the fact that they're out on time, that they're detailed, that they're informative, is a, is a, I think a tremendous benefit to the board. And I just want to commend the administration for supporting the committees in, in addition to their realignment. I mean, the committees are getting more support in their, in their work than they've ever gotten before. So I think that's very good. I can't, I, I can't see them, I can't see how Kate could support nine committees. I'm sure she'd try, but she does a great job.
Mrs. Lay?
Yeah, and, and I don't know if we talked about in other committees, but in the operations committee, we talked about how the, the committee minutes could go out to the public in, in condensed format. But I think we find value in the committee reports and it would be nice to share that with the public. I don't, I don't know if we discussed it in the other committees, but we did do it in operations. And can I switch gears or, you want to continue on this? Okay.
If it's on the subject, you can keep going.
Nope.
Mr. Kins?
I'll, I'll second the commendation on the, the way that the committees are being run, the focus, the work. When you talk about how much work that there is for each committee, I, I see that as well where previously, meetings were smaller, more focused. Moving into the sub-team, I asked the question, why not just have separate committees that are focused on it? Because the benefit that we had in the old version is that we've got nine people who have many different skills that lend itself to different areas. So for example, on the negotiations team, we had Greg, myself, and, and Mr. Hughes. Only one person may have been on the, on the, on the HR committee. So there's, I think there's benefit for being able to, to, to poll on people's, on our board members' individual strengths and talents to be able to address it. And then there's, there are two functions that I see more as a, a board function. One of them is governance or policy, which spans across all three. And it's, I like the education operations and HR from administrative for how the, how it's run, but then there's a couple board functions as a board itself, and that's governance or policy. And then also finance, which is where we've been voted to oversee to make sure that, that the money's being spent well, that the budgets are being put together. The budget process is one where we have a lot of input. It's an episodic event where it starts in the January timeframe and then finishes up in April. And then basically can go dormant till, till the next year comes around. So those are, those are alternative views as to, where I see some of the value in the old structure where you had it separate. I, I think, I think you can have the separate committees aligned within those three, you know, so you can have the curriculum, communications aligned with, with the appropriate administrative people, much as it is now. So from a, from an operations perspective, in terms of running the meetings, they can be as efficient and effective as they are now. But we've, like I said, we've got a, we've got a strong team here and let's take advantage of the, the different skill sets that we have in those different areas.
I do want to point out that as often happened in the former committee structure, you would overlap the HR people with the negotiations people and you would end up essentially having the, the very similar teams. So, and.
That wasn't the case.
Or facilities, facilities and finance often overlapped.
That wasn't the case at all. I, I mean, I was on the, I was on the negotiations committee, I was on the finances, I was on strategic plans. So those, those would span all three, operations, HR, and, and curriculum.
And, and the other comment about policy being separate in that there was a, an observation that often we get a policy, when we had a policy committee, we would then refer it to, you know, the education committee to look at, and then it would come back to the policy committee. So if the education group is looking at the policy related to education, it might be a bit more efficient.
Also, also with the, with the, if you were to change the name from policy to governance, then you can also incorporate other aspects where we do our self-evaluation as a board, our separate board goals, which as a board, I don't know if we've ever done that, not the district goals, but board goals.
Board self-evaluations?
Yeah.
Dr. Rosenberg?
Just one quick question or, or comment. Mr. Kins, you, you talked about the finance committee handling the finance. And I know that in past years, there's been some conversations among the board that, that the board wants to have more input into the finance. input into the finance work earlier. I'm going to, since we've never gone, we haven't gone through a budget cycle with the new committees, but I'm going to assume that the budget, the budget that relates to education will go to the education committee, the budget that relates to operations will go to operations committee, and the budget that relates to HR will go to the HR committee. So in a sense, it seems to me that there is more input from the board in the formulation of the budget than all of it going to, everybody will have a say in that area that they have, that they're supporting early, which I think is a very good idea, as opposed to three people on the finance committee who, granted, they, you know, they worked very hard on the budget, and they tried to take everything into consideration, but the board didn't see it till about, I don't know, we didn't see an original budget or anything till about 30 days before the vote. Now I would assume that we're all going to work on the basic building blocks of the budget in our respective committees. If I have that wrong, please say.
Let's test that assumption.
What we're planning on doing, we actually have a committee meeting coming up, where we're going to be talking about process. And we're at the point now where we have a first draft administratively of kind of where we are in the budget process. It's still fluid, we still have a lot of unknowns in terms of the revenue side of the budget. But it's important, I think, to have a process that the board is very comfortable with as we move forward. The board is going to be provided with much, much more detailed information on the budget through our Systems 3000 software than the board has experienced in the past. I think that that will require some time so that people understand what that is, what it means, you know, all of the details, how we went through an administrative process to look at what our needs are, what are the differences between the wants and the needs, and how our team here worked very hard at trying to get to a budget that we're ready to begin discussions on. But it's coincidental that you actually brought that up, because this morning, we brought that up as a central staff administrative topic. So we administratively have talked about making the recommendation to the operations committee that, as part of the process, we look at education, looking at education-specific related budget items, human resources doing the same, operations looking at the non-instructional areas specifically, but operations has to have the coordinating function of pulling all of that together, and then presenting recommendations to the full board, possibly. But this is one of the things that I look forward to having the discussion with the operations committee, to see what their thoughts and ideas are before we move ahead with any particular direction with it. It is new, we have a new committee structure and a new governance structure, and I think it's important that we take it step by step, and we have good communications through it.
Mr. Gillett?
I want to follow up on what Mr. Kins said. When I sat down to look at committee structures, and I listed the pros and cons of our traditional structure, and everything that Tom said, everything you said was on my pros list. I mean, what you really enunciated, I think, what were the pros of the traditional structure. And there's a few more, too. You know, sometimes it's great to have just three people, and no minutes being taken, and you're just, you know, fast and loose, and really getting to the issues, sometimes it's better than having four people and a couple of administrators and the secretary and the whole thing. You know, so, but I really, as I said when I first spoke, I really weighed those pros against Dr. Schiff's recommendations and what he said about how just the three committees really helps him have, you know, the three meetings a month, and just how the whole, the way he does the whole thing, I really had to take that into account, you know, when I'm sort of making this recommendation that we go with a modified three-committee plan, try to save some aspects of the traditional structure, as many as we can within it. And Tom, another thing, the year when you were on negotiations, that was a complete anomaly. Every year that I've been on the board, and going back even before, and Chris will tell you from the olden days, when I was just a little boy, Chris and I used to watch them on TV, that negotiations of personnel were always the same three members, pretty much always.
May I also suggest that having a three-committee structure does not negate the board's option to constitute an ad hoc committee. So there may be times when it may be appropriate to say, let's do an ad hoc committee on this, or let's do an ad hoc committee on that. And if it's the will of the board, we can certainly write a policy to allow for those considerations as well.
And I'll just put in that I've been very impressed with the way that the meetings have been running, in terms of it in previous committee, the previous committee, and maybe it's, you know, partially previous administrations, you would get very little information prior to the day of the meeting. You would walk in and you'd get your agenda, and here's the supporting information. Maybe in education, you would get the books delivered to your door. But, I'm a person, I want to have a good reading of whatever I'm going to discuss, and I want to have that a few days beforehand, and then I want to come in and have the discussion in the meeting, not trying to read as fast as I can and analyze as fast as I can and find, you know, is this a good thing or is this a bad thing? And I've found presently, you get a good week to read up on whatever is the topics at hand, and you walk in and you have your discussion. And I think that is, we're much, much more informed about what issues we're talking about. And I don't know if it's, once again, it may not be the committee structure, but we're also, it seems to be in this, as we've gone along, we're more willing that if there's problems, or if there's resistance in a committee meeting, it doesn't immediately go on the board agenda to be, you know, argued in public, and people aren't informed about these problems. Instead, you ask for information, it gets moved on to the next meeting, you get those questions answered, or the information you want. Then when it comes out in public, you're still having that discussion, but you're not asking those questions in public and not having the answers. And people probably want to know the answers to the questions, instead of, well, you know, we're not sure, and you still have to vote tonight. So I'm finding a lot more information is flowing to us to be informed, board members. Is that a raised hand?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Puls?
I'm sold, it's hard to raise my hand. Greg, if you're implying that instead of watching Sesame Street, you watch board meetings that I presided over, it's amazing you turned out this way.
I just, for the record, we're exactly the same age. I think you're 47. Yeah, it's on mine. We're exactly the same age.
That's not supposed to go into public record.
There you go.
Nobody's recording, right?
Right. That's why I want to know if anybody's recording, by the way. I think, you know, given my history and my first go-around, there was certainly some shortcomings of the older, traditional committee structure. There's some positives, and there were some shortcomings. And certainly in the four or five months, I guess, or four months that we've been trying this, we've seen some things that worked well, and some things that we would like to change, we'd like to kind of smooth over. To me, the most important thing is, when you look at what, kind of look at the district as a business, and what is it that we focus on? And if you look at how the administration is structured, our administration is structured in three critical areas. That was the focus of the Building on Excellence Report, that's the focus of our district goals, it's three areas. And I think, to me, the strongest reason to stay with that three-committee structure is, that maintains our focus and recognition that those are the three most important things that we look at, and having the committee structure based on that keeps that focus, keeps the right people at the meetings, and keeps the continuity on each of those areas. I definitely think, as we discussed Friday, there's some things we could do to kind of balance the load and make sure the equality of voting, and those kind of issues are taken care of. But to me, the alignment of the committee structure with the functioning of the district is probably the biggest value reason for this new structure.
Mrs. Haas?
I agree with a lot of the things that have been said here tonight by my colleagues. One of my biggest problems with the new committee structure is the lack of emphasis on policy and communication, both of which, I think, are very important responsibilities of the board, not the administration. I mean, obviously, it's for the administration to follow through on policies and to do the communication, but as the committee structure stands right now, I think that policy and communication are discussed after the major subject of each committee is discussed. And I'd like to see that brought forward more. I also would like to see the board thinking about and talking about policies that we don't have right now. Most of our policy function is dealing with policies that have been updated because of changes to the law by the state. I would like to see the board focus in each of its committees on policies that we might like to have that we don't have, because certainly we don't have every single policy that every other board in the state has. The other thing, as far as communication goes, in the past, when we had a communication committee, I think that sent a message to the public that communication was important to us. I think that message is as important today as it was back then. And I would like communication also to be led by the board, because we are the liaison between our community and the administration. So, with those two points, you know, I say that I agree with a lot of the other things that are discussed, but I hope that everybody takes what I just said to heart and think about it at their respective committee meetings.
All right. Mr. Kins?
Just to float an idea, where you have the three committees that each report into a member of your staff, you could have a governance where the liaison is Dr. Schiff.
Is there any other old business of other nature? Mrs. Lay?
Thank you. I'm shifting gears to the strategic plan. So when I attended the Rover Raiders kickoff this Saturday, the enthusiasm that I saw reminded me of the commitment that I'd like our board to make to all of our students. And I see Dr. Schiff nodding, because I think that's one of the biggest takeaways we had when we walked out of there, was how can we do this for all of our students? One year ago, Mrs. Haas and I went to a workshop called Driving Student Achievement, and I keep reminding the board from time to time, because the premise of that workshop was that all students can learn and be challenged. And it took us a whole day to get through that concept, and it does sound very simple, but if it's really part of our goal, strategic plan, it can be very powerful. So one way to measure this is an environment where students are thriving and not just getting by. And we know that there's a lot of students that get by, because they're smart enough to just get by, and they do well in their classes, but they may not be as challenged as they could be. And in today's competitive work environment, people just can't get by. You have to excel, and excelling means that you have to have a passion for what you do. So I'd like to have, I'd like the students to find their passion in these years. We just completed a five-year strategic plan that does have elements to make this happen. So when residents ask how we prioritized the strategic plan, at least for me, it depends on whether we reached the goal that all students can learn and be challenged. For example, a grading system to let us know in a timely way if a student didn't understand the content, and one that gives the student different options to measure the content is one of those goals. Another strategic plan goal is to add problem-based learning at the middle school level. What this does is to keep students interested in the assignment, engage them in a way that is similar to what we do at work, so that they learn real life skills, such as strong teamwork, analyzing problems, and it gives them the confidence gained from solving those problems. And I wish all of us were a fly on the wall, and parents too, because as I was walking out, the students who got the challenge via, I don't know, what is that called? Some global simulcast, they were taking, they were just jotting down notes feverishly, and then they were dashing to their laptops. There was this setup with eight or nine laptops, and they were like, talking over the laptops and typing furiously. And this is what we want the students to be that passionate about. So I'm very happy that we have this in our strategic plan.
If I may, I'll just add to that. With the team of 80 students, or 80 to 100 students, the thing that struck me was that they were students with all types of interests and passions. So you had your technically oriented folks, but I spoke to people that had arts, PR, they didn't have a technical bone in their body, but they were there to help other aspects. So there were teams of, you know, eight students around, and they each had different functions. So that cross-functional teamwork, solving a problem, actually having something physical, where you know you're going to have failures, but you're going to experiment, you're going to get, you're going to optimize and come out with the best that you can, was motivating, it surpassed my expectations. I brought a couple of my kids with me, I think it surprised them as to how interesting and exciting we are, so probably have a couple future recruits. But I look forward to implementing that at the middle school level from a curricular perspective.
All right. Any other old business? Mrs. Haley?
This week, in the papers, it was highly publicized that 350 school board members must resign because they didn't complete their mandatory background checks. So I just want to reiterate to the public, and Mr. Mahmoud, you can confirm that we are all good on the board here in Hillsborough.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Yes, I've been fingerprinted multiple times last year. For all good things.
I wasn't going to say.
Okay, Steve, we believe you.
They need to have an omnibus fingerprinting, so that you could have a little certificate to show, because I got fingerprinted for two different organizations, and background checked probably for one, and so. Mrs. Haas?
Yeah, I would just like to add something from our December Hillsborough Happenings newsletter, about which I was unaware, because I'm not the communications chair anymore. But be that all as it may, our school district website now has a translation feature, and the translation feature works in an unbelievable number of different languages, languages, some of which I've never heard of. But we have so many languages, and I've actually tried it, and it's really amusing to see what they do with some of the technical jargon that we have in schools. But anyway, if anybody wants to learn a few languages, you could read our website in various languages by going to the website, and in the upper left-hand corner, there's a tab that says, translate this page, and when you touch it, that's exactly what it does. So I just want to make sure, since it was on page 11 of our 11-page newsletter, and I thought it was a little more interesting than that, I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. I can find out what cohort means in many different languages.
The German word, by the way...
I'll start with English, though, you're right, thank you.
The German word for district turns out to be berserk, which is not spelled the way the other word would be spelled, but I found that very amusing.
All right.
We're the Berserk Board of Education, you know.
All right. Any other old business? All right, seeing that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions. Thank you very much.